They'd like to call the July meeting of the Lake Lure Town Council to order. Could we please rise to the invocation?
Father, we thank you again for this beautiful community you've given us, given us to live in. We thank you for your blessings and for watching over us. We pray that you're, that you will guide us and direct us, that grant us wisdom to conduct the business of our town. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion made.
Okay, Stephen made motions. They're second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mayor's communication, we've, I hope everybody's had an opportunity, or will soon have an opportunity, to read this month's breeze. There's a really nice tribute to Mayor Cooley. And if you haven't had a chance to get one, I think there's some on the back table here. Everbridge, our new mass unit notification system has, now has over a thousand people registered. If you haven't already registered, you probably would want to do that. And there are also instructions for signing up for Everbridge on the table back there. The old system will not work anymore, I think, at some point. Is that right, Dustin?
We're going to keep it operational until our contract runs out.
Okay.
We're going to make that transition and meet some more threats.
Right. When, you know, when that contract?
Our contract runs out in December.
Okay, alright. So after December, the old system won't be operating anymore. This year, the town had fireworks on July 3rd. And from all indications, it was a great success. Shannon and Laura will tell us more about this during their time. And some of the, I have a list here of some of the comments on Facebook. First one is, "The food trucks were a big hit." That's from Peter O'Leary. "Great display. Thank you for a wonderful display. You never disappoint. First time there and was beautiful. Thank you, Lake Lure. Another wonderful event for all generations. Great job. It was a great evening. Thanks also to law enforcement and fire departments for keeping traffic flowing and overseeing that everyone had a safe and happy celebration." And we always have one. This guy must have taken a survey. "Pretty but too short. Considering most of the hundreds attending traveled a long distance to get there, I was expecting at least forty-five minutes." If that person's here, please raise your hand. Special thanks to sponsors, the Chamber and the Hickory Nut Gorge, Chimney Rock Village, Chimney Rock Village Community Development Authority. The Mountain Branch Library sponsors of Books and Bikes series each year. And they brought some very talented authors to town. And today, the Friends of the Library hosted Jonathan Putnam, who came over from London to present his latest book in a series of historical novels. He debuted his book, "A House Divided," and the author was very well received. The Town of Lake Lure and Rutherford Outdoor Coalition held a workday at Buffalo Creek Park on July the 8th. I guess that was yesterday. Thanks to all those who showed up to help repair erosion issues along the trail. And also appreciate the support of the community and the Rutherford Outdoor Coalition helping to maintain those trails. I attended a meeting last week with the Department of Transportation at Rumblin' Ball. The engineers, the DOT engineers showed us their plans for road repairs at the landslide area. They described the slide as "an ancient, large, slow-moving landslide." And they told me that's actually a technical engineering term. But they've been monitoring the slide and said that it has not moved over the past several months, which is a very good thing. But that it could begin moving again at any time. And it mostly depends on how much rain we have. When it gets saturated, when that earth gets saturated and the rocks underneath it makes it move. The slide's about three hundred feet from top to bottom and about two hundred feet as the road crosses it. They're convinced that the slide will continue moving toward Bald Mountain Lake, but just don't know when the next move will be. But they say it's been moving for many, many years. The plan now is to repair the two hundred feet of road that was affected by the slide and just put gravel in there so cars and emergency vehicles can get across. And the long-term solution, it will be to obtain some right-of-ways on Chalet Road, part of Village Road and part of Youngs Mountain Road, and kind of bypass that area altogether. But they'll make those roads wider and straighten out some of the curves a little bit. They just have to get the rights of way and from some of it, from some homeowners and some of it from Rumblin' Ball. After they do that, Buffalo Creek Road will have a cul-de-sac on each end where the, on each side of the slide. Dustin, you were there. Did I, did I miss anything? Is that? Pretty much got it, okay. The Town of Lake Lure was recently listed as one of the ten best towns in North America by Smart Travel. Smart Travel provides independent, expert advice and unbiased reviews for the best travel deals, destinations, and money-saving tips. And we appreciate that recognition. Have some upcoming events. August 8th to, excuse me, August 9th to 19th, is that right? 9th to the 11th, yeah. August 9th to the 11th is the Lake Lure Olympiad. And if you haven't signed up to volunteer, Ed Dipmer's sitting right there, and I'm sure he will have a job for you. And on the 21st of August, the Library will host its next Books and Bikes Author, that's Mary Alice Monroe, another popular author presenting her latest novel, "The Summer Games." September 9th, it, from nine o'clock to four o'clock here at the Town Hall, there's an annual artist show and sale. On the 13th and 14th is the Dirty Dancing Festival. And on the September, excuse me, October the 9th and 10th is the Lake Lure Arts and Crafts Festival. Okay, so that's the Mayor Pro Tem report. Let's see, we have Conservant Carolina, are they here? We have Peter. Peter, recognize Peter Barr, who's going to make a presentation for the Parks and Recreation for Weed Patch Mountain Trail, for the award somebody got.
Is this working?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Regarding the, the award somebody got, I'm here tonight to present the award to the Town of Lake Lure. The Town of Lake Lure is a recipient of this award. I'm going to kind of explain what's behind it and everything that led up to it and why I'm honored to present it to the town tonight. So, last month, I had the great fortune of traveling up to Washington DC to meet with Congressman Patrick McHenry, Senator Tom Tillis, Senator Richard Burr, who presented Conservant Carolina, my organization, and subsequently the Town of Lake Lure with the National Coalition of Recreational Trails Achievement Award in the category of construction and design for the Weed Patch Mountain Trail. So earlier, you were mentioning that the Town of Lake Lure is one of the top ten locations to live and play in the United States. And now it has a nationally award-winning trail under its ownership and management and in its backyard. This is something that I was extremely proud to receive on behalf of my organization, the town, and the many, many partners that made this possible. A little bit of background, I was doing some research on how Buffalo Creek Park and Weed Patch Mountain Trail came to be. And it turns out, in the, all the way back to the mid-two thousands, 2006, 2007, Ed Dipmer, and want to give special recognition to Ed, who, as I understand, under Ed's leadership, the Parks and Rec Board prepared a strategic plan that included the goal of adding parkland acreage throughout the town, particularly in the northern section, convenient to the Rumbling Bald Resort residents and guests. As the story goes, and I could talk all night about how this came to be, but my organization, Conservant Carolina, was able to purchase about fifteen hundred acres out of bankruptcy court from the former Gray Rock Development. And then working with the Town of Lake Lure closely over the next decade, lead to the creation, in phases, of several miles of trails and ultimately fifteen hundred acres that became Buffalo Creek Park. And more than twelve miles of recreational trail resources, including the Buffalo Creek Park Loop, and specifically the eight-point-six-mile Weed Patch Mountain Trail that has now been, has now earned this national award. And I'm most grateful to the town for Conservant, to, to the town for partnering with Conservant Carolina to help make this amazing recreational and natural resource available as an amenity to residents and visitors of the, of the town. It was quite a process, took a whole lot of work. When the, the town called Conservant Carolina a few years ago and said, "Hey, we have this second phase of a big park project to expand it. We had under a year to complete that. We didn't quite have enough money, definitely didn't have enough time, and gosh, we had some extremely rugged terrain to deal with." But we, we took it on in partnership and approached it one foot at a time. The award is for construction design, so I was out there designing the trail in front of the contractor who was building it, whose name is Shrimper Care, who accompanied me in Washington to receive this award. And yes, my builders of this trailer named Shrimper and Dino, which may not sound like the most upstanding gentleman, but are among the most skilled and talented trail builders that you'll ever find, and trusted me to follow me through the woods and my flags as I picked out a line leading all the way from Buffalo Creek Park up to Eagle Rock in Chimney Rock State Park. We didn't do this how you traditionally would, would accomplish this. Because of tight time and funding, the contractor and his machine was following me as I was designing it. We didn't know if we could actually get all the way to the top. And despite the time and financial limitations, halfway through the project, the entire landscape burned down in the Party Rock Fire, all seventy-three hundred acres. But we took that in stride, again, in partnership with the town, and completed the project on time and opened it last May at a ceremony in Rumbling Bald Resort. And it's now gaining notoriety as one of the most exciting, most cherished new trails in not only western North Carolina, but the entire country. So much so that it's gaining recognition from national trail organizations and leaders in, in Washington DC. So I want to thank the town for their partnership in, in creating this trail and their vision that started a decade and a half ago. And I want to read two quotes from my time in Washington regarding the Weed Patch Mountain Trail. The first of which is from Congressman Patrick McHenry, who represents this district, this region in, in Lake Lure. Congressman McHenry said, "The Weed Patch Mountain Trail offers a significant benefit to the region. It is the newest segment of a hundred-plus-mile trail network connecting the eleven thousand acres of conserve land in western North Carolina's Hickory Nut Gorge. The trail's bold and innovative design and construction takes visitors to a dramatic cliff-top view through a cave across a picturesque trout stream, traverses rugged boulder fields and ridge lines, and culminates atop a scenic rock outcropping. In addition, the Weed Patch Mountain Trail features the highest standard of sustainable design, layout, and construction to protect the natural resources it traverses. It includes state-of-the-art curvilinear design that changes direction up and down and side to side, as well as rock stairs to manage water while enhancing the user experience. It features more than one hundred and fifty artfully created rock stairs, as well as more than five hundred yards of stone paving and tread hardening across streams and boulder fields. The design also incorporated several components for mountain bikers made from onsite material. The Weed Patch Mountain Trail serves hikers, mountain bikers, and rock climbers, tripling its relevancy for outdoor recreationists and its value in driving regional tourism, economic development. Now more than ever, it is critically important to support outdoor recreation as a crucial piece of North Carolina's natural and cultural heritage." And much shorter and less verbose, from Senator Tom Tillis. "This is an outstanding achievement, and I join Conservant Carolina's members, volunteers, and the surrounding communities in celebrating this honor. As an avid outdoorsman, I stand in awe of the spectacular views and natural beauty of North Carolina. I'm glad that Conservant Carolina and the Town of Lake Lure's hard work to our community and thoughtful design has been acknowledged." So I want to reiterate my gratitude to the Town of Lake Lure with their partnership to Conservant Carolina, among many other partners. There were many who made this trail possible and led to this honor and recognition. There were multiple state trust funds. We received, the town received recreational trails program and Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grants. There were more entities that contributed to the construction of this trail, and many more that currently care for it. So at this time, I'm more than honored to present this award to the Town of Lake Lure. And I'd like to show special recognition and call up from the Town of Lake Lure's Parks and Recreation Committee Board, Larry Chakovsky, Ed Dipmer, and Jim Walters, as well as Commissioner Weber, the liaison to the Parks and Rec Board, to present them the award. If you could join me right in the front. Jim, Larry, and Ed, thank you for your service of the Parks and Rec Board, and for many, many, decades of work leading to the creation of this trail. And Commissioner Weber, for your support of the Parks and Rec Board, and all of your votes over the years leading to the creation of Buffalo Creek Park and Weed Patch Mountain Trail. I'm proud to say that the, that Lake Lure now is the owner of a nationally award-winning recreational multi-use trail in their own backyard.
Thank you, fellas. Thank you, Peter. Okay, well, town manager, communication?
Sure. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I wanted to add to that.
Okay.
I was a very small part of that, and I thank you. The greatest notoriety here goes to Conservant Carolina for their contributions and support, and, and of course, to the tutelage of Chairman Walters of the Board, and, and the driving force Larry Chakovsky pushing every day on Weed Patch Mountain and Buffalo Creek Park. And that, that's where all that credit goes.
Okay. Thank you, fellas. Shannon?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Moore. For the town manager communication, I just wanted to start off, we have, our department heads are going to come up and talk about various projects, give you an update just in a minute. But I just, not a play-by-play review, but I think just some reflection over the past twelve months as to what the team has been dealing with and have done a wonderful job at managing their departments and working for the folks in the community. But just some, some ones of note, Dean was appointed to a newly merged Department of Parks Recreation in Lake. He's been doing a wonderful job, and Garrett has been appointed to oversee the recreation element of that department. We've had a lot of turnover in the department. So one has been community development, and Brad Burton was elevated into the director position. He's had to train two personnel as of date in both zoning and soil and sanitation control. They've taken over two functions from the Lake Department when Clint departed. So Brad has done an excellent job this year. As you guys know, the budget process was very smooth. It resulted actually in a, in a tax reduction. We basically unleashed Sam and let him do his job. Sam's done an excellent job with the budget this year. Not to mention Laura Creji and her excellent work in communications. I feel like communication with the community has increased dramatically through Facebook and other, other means. We had great feedback during our storms. We worked hard to stay in touch with the community as we worked through some of the natural storm events that we had. And then the dam and sewer piece, David's done a wonderful job overseeing that. He probably has one of the most complex departments in town that he oversees and works with daily and has done a wonderful, wonderful job there. Storm recovery and emergency management, you've got to call out both chiefs on that. We've had a lot of events over the past twelve months that they have managed and managed well. And Chief Humphries and his team, they basically have managed parking, in addition with Dustin for the events. So I just wanted to recognize those guys were starting a new budget year, and I just felt like they needed to be recognized for the excellent work. And if you would join with me in a round of applause for them, I certainly...
David's going to give us a little bit of an update on working with the League of Municipalities regarding some of the items that we're trying to update and bring up stuff relative to the dam.
Back toward the end of last year, maybe even the first of this year, the North Carolina League of Municipalities, we told our interns for the dam and hydro plant came down, done inspection, looked over some things, and there were some things that they wanted to see done and documented and, and stuff. So we've been in the process of working with the league, talking back and forth, had Charlie Merrick involved because some of the things they had requested, we felt like didn't play part in what we'd done. So after some discussion back and forth and, and talking several times, I think we're getting pretty well where we need to be. I'm waiting on a call back from the league now, and the next week or so, I'm going to have another onsite visit with the league where we can go over everything specifically and make sure that we have what they are requesting when they come to do audits or whatever, you know, in the future. And I, I think we're going to get there. I, I think things are coming together, and, and I think it'll be for the better. On another point, down there at the hydro plant, you know, we've been going back and forth on the little generator for some time, thanks to William Morgan and Shannon and Kurt and a lot of other people. We've got the contract done. Williams looked over it and made sure it was up to snuff, I guess you would say, as best he could. That's been sent to Charlie. We're waiting on a signature from him, and once we receive that, we'll be able to move forward on trying to complete the little generator. One other thing I'd like to mention, it's a big part of the dam and hydro plant, is, is what Snobel has been doing for the town. And I just want to take a second and give credit to Bob Cameron. He questioned some things over, over the last dealings we had with Snobel, and he looked over things and asked the engineers to go back and relook and, and see if there was anything they could do to reduce fees, reduce cost to the town. And after a week and a half ago, maybe, we sat down, had a phone conference, me and Shannon and Bob and Snobel on the phone, there was numbers, in my opinion, that were drastically reduced, which ultimately saves this town money. And so I, I think we're moving forward. Correct me if I'm wrong, Shannon, but they've been approved to move forward with the horse and the pin stop, and just getting started in, in the repairs and stuff that need to be done down there. But I, I think everybody's doing a good job, and I just want to say thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
David, I have one question on the report.
Okay.
About the flow meter in the Chimney Rock line?
Yes.
And, and you removed it, and you had over a hundred thousand gallons a day?
We, we did. That was the first, we got it, and Don set it up, we put the meter in, and left it in for a short period of time, and pulled it back out, and, and there were some flows on there, a hundred and five, a hundred and fifteen thousand gallons per day. But the flow meter was not set up one hundred percent like it needed to be before we could break it down in an hour by hour to compare to what happened during weather events.
Right.
So we pulled it back out. Don has, has worked with it, and I think he's got it to where we can break it down and, and get more of a timeline of what's happening when. We have reinserted it into the, the sewer line again, and we'll get a little data and see what we come up with. Also, on that subject, I have talked with Rural Water of North Carolina. We, the town is a member of Rural Water Association. They came in here and met with me, and we went out on the lake. They offer services to the town at no cost. They have offered to let us use some more flow meters that we will not have to purchase. So they're, they're going to, we're in the process of getting that done. We're going to put more flow meters in areas around town such as Rumbling Bald's Discharge Point, maybe Firefly Cove, places where we know big areas dump into one place, and just see what information we can get. You know, any information we can get may lead us to find where some of our issues are. And so that's, that's another thing that's happening, and that stuff will come to the town at no cost.
Do we actually have to remove it every time to get the data?
We, we do not. The, the meter itself can stay in the invert, but it, it has a box up top, you just tie it off. And we've been having to take it out because Don has the...
Find him.
Well, and he has the program on his computer. We're actually going to put that program on my laptop, so we'll be able to just go out and plug the laptop right into it, get the information and go on. And then we should only have to remove it after that if the battery's going to be in the box.
Okay.
Thanks. Get some good information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next time we're going to talk about is sewer, about the, we're finishing up the engineering report that's been submitted to DEQ. That's, it's all complete except really the financing piece, but what we've asked, we've worked with a geotechnical engineer to come in and perform subsurface reconnaissance. So if you see BLE engineering out in the field, that's what they're doing. They're running ground penetrating radar, and they'll be taking some soil borings to see where rock is, because that's where the expense is if we're talking about low-pressure system and wrapping our town in that. So hiring the geotechnical engineers will help us ground truth the construction number in the ER, and then we will move on from that point. And the report should be done except for the financing piece. The next item I wanted Brad to talk to us about just a little bit is trying to find a way to facilitate Wi-Fi in our downtown area. So he's actually handed council a few graphs, and he'll go over that with you. Brad?
Good evening. The graphs in front of you are compliments of Ron Walters with Pangaea. He sent those today, and they're very informative. About two weeks ago, we sent out... About two weeks ago, we sent out an RFP for request proposals for the enhancement of Wi-Fi in the downtown area of Morse Park, the arcade area, the beach area and getting out more toward the tip of the park and possibly being able to utilize those same facilities over in the campground area. We do have some current commitments with Pangaea, but we sent the RFP out just to try to get some conversation started and that conversation is going to come. Those RFPs will be back July the 15th. Again, we are, we do have some commitments with Pangaea that we have to honor, but we are moving forward with that. And on an additional note, the FirstNet AT&amp;T telecommunications program that was mandated by Congress post 9/11 is still alive. We do have a, an engineering firm that is working on site acquisition here in town. They have been for a little while. Had some brief conversations over the past two days with those folks. And I think that that project is not in a coma, but it's kind of asleep or something. They're having some issues with acquiring easements and rights of way and things like that, but it is still very much alive and it would be a very strong bit of coverage for this area for bona fides, straight up and down cell service. So that's still happening as well.
Any questions about Wi-Fi? Mr. Cameron? Brad, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Lake Patrol is our next topic. I've got Chief Humphries. We sent out his communique regarding that and schedule. I know that's, that's been a discussion and a topic that you want us to address. So could you just brief us on your information, Chief Humphries? And then we may have some questions.
Like Shannon said, he asked me to put together a protocol and schedule so I can present to council. Sent that out to you. One of the things in there is a calendar showing that the weekends that are covered by reserve officers. The times are out there, we try to give them out there in the peak hours where there's most traffic and that's laid out through September. For full-time officers, it's a little more difficult to put on paper because they're still responding to calls on the road. Want to bring reserve officers in for the weekend because we can dedicate them specifically to the lake and that's the time where the highest number of boats out on the lake is the weekend. Through the week, the officers are required to go out. Try to make at least a daily patrol and a evening patrol as permitted on weather, how much traffic they've got on the land, calls for service and so forth. We're in a transition right now. This lake enforcement was with Dean Givens and Lake Operations. We're going through transitions of the stat you got this month don't reflect totally on what we've done. Next month, it should show a more clear vision of what we've done on the lake. I know we're trying to address some issues. I know Commissioner Killie has brought up some issues about seeing several boats without permits on them or dead permits. I think we've talked some about some non-mudged boats in the middle of the lake. Been going over that with officers and trying to address that more. And a lot of times that's what happens, we get the bill from commissioners or citizens and we try to focus more in on that. So we're working with officers on that, which has developed a plan to put in some training. Dean, who's been on the lake for many years and enforcement and such, him and wildlife are going to get together as well as me and try to put in force a training with officers. So hopefully throughout the rest of the summer and working at that end, we'll become more effective and hope to do, as always, a constant strive to get better. That's what we're hoping to do.
You're going to train the wildlife guy to be a little nicer, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know someone. That's part of the training. They train us, we train them.
You need to train them one, yeah. Yep. Yep. I appreciate your effort. I've been out there, you know, last few weeks and your guys have always been out there and we appreciate your work.
Thank you for saying that.
I've had a number of comments too, Sean and Dean on the new boat. It's very visible. People, I think, you know, I think that's made a difference to people if they see it, you know, it's no different than when you're on the highway, if you see a patrol car, you look to see how fast you're going and slow down or whatever. It's no different, I think, on the lake.
Yes, sir. Thank you for saying that.
And I'll pass the letter on, email on to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Sean. Next, I just wanted Dean to brief council on dredging, our schedule for the new fifth of the year.
Kind of four topics on dredging. One of them is lake mapping, help us understand where the sediment deposits are and what kind of shape we're in. That's been completed. I have the maps for that to kind of show us what's going on under the lake, in the main channel, the river and in the Marina Bay out here. The second piece to it is, is restoration of the Boys Camp Road Materials Recovery Facility. That's currently underway. Our completion for that work, we're targeting September is what we hope to be done, to have it ready for operation for the dredging season. The next component will be dredging and we hope to begin dredging in later September, early October for this year's upcoming dredging. And priority dredging of areas, it's not carved in stone. I just kind of looked at it and thought about where we needed to do things first. The first place I'm looking at is the Marina Bay out here, needs some dredge work if we're going to be building these docks. We kind of need to get that done before we put the docks out there. Secondly, I was going to move them out to the main channel as you leave the bay. We have a few high areas in there still that I want to try to get those knocked down for the boats not turning up the bud and stuff in the bay. And then the last way I'd like to move it back into the river and start working on our catch basin.
Sounds like a good plan.
Has there been any more discussion with Tim about him doing more dredging on his own?
Yeah, well, there's, he's, he will dredge whenever he needs the material. This year, he would have dredged more, but he didn't have anywhere to put the material. Once we get, again, we're catching up from what happened to us last time. So once he gets this Boys Camp Road Materials Facility redone and in working order, then hopefully by the end of next season, when we run out of money, he can still keep going because he has the area and the facility to be able to continue.
Those sonar charts you've got, could you send those to council? Would you like to see them out here?
Yeah, digital maps. Can you send us digital?
I can. And one thing that we figured out too, usually where we would map an area, we could produce maps for just that area. Well, now we've figured out how to tie them areas together. So I've actually got one roll up here that Brad printed off for me, a large picture. And it shows actually the river, the Marina Bay and the main channel all the way up to the end of the Silk Shelf is one. And you can actually see all the contours and the lake bottom and everything. It's a really neat map, but yes, I can forward that on.
Thank you.
Good work, then.
Yep, I appreciate it.
Thanks. We touched on this already, but Laura was going to talk just a little bit about the fireworks events, give you a little more detail.
I think one of the things that we wanted to do tonight is get any feedback from you regarding the fireworks. But as you think about that and anything that you might want to share with us, I would like to just first recognize our co-chairs for this year's event, Sean Humphries and Dustin Wecaster. They've seen way more of me than they would have liked to in the past month as we prepared for this event. And I'm very grateful for their leadership and think that it added to a very safe event, which is our, really our number one priority. I also want to reiterate, Pro Tim Moore, what you said about the sponsors for the event and just recognize and acknowledge again, the Chamber of Hickory Nut Gorge, Chimney Rock Village and Chimney Rock Village Community Development Authority, CDA, because they helped sponsor the event for the town and I want to acknowledge them. And our team is in the process of just debriefing and assessing and the areas that we're looking at are, of course, marketing, the crowd control that we had here while people were in town, overall safety, the parking. And along that lines, I'll mention that we did also have some support from the Hickory Nut Gorge Outreach in providing assistance with parking in our town center and that allowed them to collect some donations for the outreach of just over $700. So we're really pleased that they had success, but also very grateful for their support and helping us to manage parking because that is a challenge for our town. And I would also acknowledge both Riverside Center, Event Center and the Mullis Campground for giving us permission to use their parking spot and that created about close to 200 parking spots. So we're very grateful for that. So we're assessing all those things along with trash and cleanup and the overall quality of the fireworks. So those are kind of the big areas that we're assessing and we welcome any feedback from you.
Do you have an idea about how many people came?
We've been chatting about that. We were going to throw out a rank in the ballpark of 3,000 to 3,500. It's very hard to assess.
That's counting the folks on the lake, I suppose.
It's very hard to assess and we have lots of footage. We have drone footage and lots of pictures, but it's very difficult to assess from the beach, in the lake and on Morse Park and Pool Creek, Picnic Park. So if anybody wants to give a better estimate, feel free.
Well, my feedback from my deck, I saw more boats this year than I have in the last few years in that main channel.
It was packed.
And I had five folks there from South Carolina that loved it and thought it was fabulous.
Good.
Okay. Good job, Laura.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my comments, okay?
Have public hearings. Ordinance 190709, ordinance allowing permitted mobile food vendors to operate during town sanctioned events in areas specifically designed outside of town owned property or the GU zoning I guess, Brad, you're going to, you're going to tell us about that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Moore, one quick change that I'd like to make, and I'd like to do this on the fly, I'll make this into the adopted if this is to be adopted. There are a couple misplaced references in here where there's a mention of special event areas off town property, special event areas off of town property and it potentially could be confusing. So anywhere that we've got a reference to off or off of town property, I'd like to substitute the words not on town property. And that makes it, the continuity will flow through this and be a little more specific. The reason behind this ordinance is, council traditionally has always allowed for suspension of the pendler's license and on property that they own and within the GU zoning district during special events to have food, mobile food vendors, food, also known as food trucks. We use the term mobile food vendors because there are some trailers, so we use that terminology. But there, as these special events that we are so fortunate to have and continue to grow, there is a perception that there will be a need to move off of town property during these events in areas that are, that are geographically defined as a special event area. Once we get into that category, that's kind of, you're moving into a temporary use of land, which really has some zoning overtones to it. So what the intent of this, this, these set of regulations through this ordinance is, is to, with some standards and through a permit process, allow for folks to locate within a designated special event, in the area that is designated within the special event area, but potentially on private property with the endorsement of the property owner. So it's, it's, it's an opportunity to expand, you know, the food vendors off of, out of Morse Park or off the streets and the arcade, but within areas that are, in other words, if we had a special event area that was designated as, you know, our downtown area and to the Flowering Bridge, a potential vendor couldn't come in and sell a food truck on Highway Nine and say, "I'm here for the special event." That would not be appropriate. So this is just, and it's, and it's, I'd like to really thank the zoning and planning board. We went through about three iterations of this and I think it turned out really well and they were happy with it. And I think it's, I think it's a good thing and it will kind of achieve a little bit of control, but not a lot of heavy handedness in the application of it. Look at the names.
I'm just seeing if anybody signed up.
Oh, okay. I don't know if you will come over here and get on. How dare you, Frank.
You're not worried, are you, Brad?
I don't, I don't, I don't take, I don't take a, no, any, every man's got a pencil. I just want to.
Okay. Y'all have any questions?
I don't have any questions. We went over this in the zoning and planning meeting and everything. I think it was very well hashed out in there.
Well written, well prepared.
Thank you.
Okay. Good job, well organized. Well matted.
And it comes recommended before approval from?
Yes, sir. It does come recommended from approval from. So you have any motion on this?
We have two people signed up that want to make comments.
Okay.
That's Pat Beatty. Pat still here?
Yeah.
Okay. This is old foot, other. Pat, I'm sorry. This says other than the public hearing. I'm sorry. Your comments, did you have comments about this?
I don't think that's going on tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, wait, we'll call you in a minute. Okay, so I picked up the wrong sheet and the other sheet didn't have any names on it. So is there anybody that wants to comment on the ordinance that we have in front of us? Okay. Well, there's, since there's no comments, is there a motion to move out of public hearing?
I'll make that motion, we move out of.
Second.
Okay, made by Bob, second by Stephen, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, do we need a motion now?
Yeah.
I'll make a move to recommend approval of ordinance number 190709, including Brad's recommendation, when the term is used, off of town property, be changed to not on town property.
Okay, motion made by Bob.
Second.
Second by Stephen, all in favor?
Aye.
She knows. Okay, good. One way I wanted to go.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Your next matter before you is a ordinance amending Chapter 92 zoning regulations of the town, amending section 92.101D1, non-conforming structures. And I'll draw your attention to the graphic that has been slipped you and brought before you here. The traditional interpretation of this ordinance has been, well, as it's written and one of the rules of construction, as I was learned of as a young zoning buck, was if it says what it says, it says what it says and it can't say anything else. And I think our attorney will agree with that. So the way the original ordinance is written, it says that no such non-conforming structure may be enlarged or altered in any way which increases its non-conformity. And that, up until 31015, was the non-conforming enlargement and alteration section of your ordinance. 31015, the following was added, enlargements, additions or alterations on an existing roof line or within the existing building footprint shall not be considered an increase in a structure's non-conformity, which is an excellent, excuse me, an excellent addition. We've got, the community is full of older homes that were built pre-zoning that have situations that were, porches and decks are tied into houses and patios are tied in and there's things where, you know, if you were to build something on, that wouldn't make much difference in the world. But in, with those two sections, when I draw your attention to the exhibit here, the strict interpretation of those, so this is a, this is a situation that I just, I made up. interpretation of those, so this is a situation that I just, I made up stuff, but you've got a source of a nonconformity, which is a side yard setback encroachment. It's a cantilevered deck with a roof. This does not exist anywhere. I just made this up. With number, your example number one, the strict interpretation of your ordinance as it is prior to this suggested amendment would not allow for you to do that, even though that is well within all your setback requirements, because that is an increase in the nonconformity of the structure, plain and simple. It's not hurting anything and it's pretty heavy-handed. And I found, since my short tenure here, since December 5th of 2016, I can find examples over and over and over where we have enforced this. Number two, you know, there's another example where, you know, would we allow this to happen with existing regulations or proposed regulations? The answer is no, because this type of addition would create a setback encroachment and we wouldn't let you do that.
Brad, could they do that if they angled that off and stayed?
If they stayed within there, they could with these regulations, with the new regulations. So, number three is what the current regulations support right now, where you've got, let's just say, for example, on the right side of that number three, you've got a retaining wall with a backfill and they've built a patio, tied it into the house, and if, and the way we define structure and building, that is part of that building. So, and it is way into the setback, but if they wanted to put a roof screen and porch on it, our existing regulations would say yes, the new regulations would say yes. And if they needed to get a variance or an overhang, we probably would say yes to that too. But I can't speak for the board. That's just a conjecture. And number four is a real big, you know, situation where we've got a lot of folks and I've actually personally dealt with some folks that need to do additions or alterations to their home because of informities or age or having to, having not accessible bathrooms or kitchen facilities. Number four, with your existing regulations, would not be allowed, but with the current regulations or as proposed, it will comply. And just to read those into the record, the proposed amendment is, "Further, a nonconforming structure may be enlarged or altered if it's part of the structure to be enlarged or altered, and in the area of the lot into which such changes are proposed, pre-exist in conformance with requirement of these regulations." This has been vetted through your attorney. He likes it. The city of Charlotte likes it because like a good professional planner, I stole it from them. So, that's where it came from. And I think that will allow folks a little bit more use of their property. It's not as heavy-handed and we certainly won't, you know, in situations where we've got a small sliver of something that's making a nonconformity, if somebody's got the opportunity to do something else that is completely and totally compliant, it really just seems to be a good fit. Zoning and Planning Board recommended for approval as well. I appreciate your examples here. It makes it simple to follow. Thank you, sir. Thank you. I appreciate you saying that.
Anybody have any questions for Brad?
No, I appreciate you looking out for the community. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any public comment? No one has signed up? Any public comment on this ordinance?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing on the ordinance number 19-07-09A.
Motion's made by Stephen. They're second?
Second.
Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I'll make the motion, we adopt ordinance 19-07-09A to amend Section 92.101 sub-D of the zoning regulations, nonconforming structures.
Okay. Motion's made by Stevens. They're second?
I'll second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to add, after 13 years on the Board of Adjustment, this is a super effort that helps restore property rights to citizens in spite of zoning and allows you more flexibility to do what you want on your property and it's a great effort for Brad's party. Thank you.
Second that.
Yeah.
Good job, Brad.
You're not as bad as people say, but you're not.
Liaison reports.
I'll go first if you want.
Okay. Go ahead.
We had the Utilities Board regular meeting on July 2nd at 2:00 PM. The discussions there was, as Brad spoke out earlier, and Brad's been a big part of this, they put out a request, RFI for, or RFP for information on Wi-Fi services for the area. The board had a great discussion on that. We want to thank Russ Pitts for coming in with broadband and GIA and to address where they were and their progress and update information on that with his director, Ron Walters. Also, we appreciate Bob Keith coming in and speaking on behalf of the chamber and how they're working and as they brought out, this is for the central area of Lake Lur, trying to get some Wi-Fi and get these services expanded. So, I think it was a great conversation and I think this RFP will bring everything back to the forefront and get us working on that. Dave DeOrio pointed out that basically the discussion was for three points. One's for public Wi-Fi for the whole town. Second's a cell tower for the cellular services and the third discussion needs to be on the public Wi-Fi for downtown area that they're looking at right now in this situation. So, I spoke up on that. There's talk about also what Shannon discussed as far as our low-pressure sewer system update. The third ER has been sent to the state, which is under review by them. And then, of course, the discussion over BLE and that's contract. After that was discussed and Richard Glasser brought up the point about it's time that this Utility Board, we go ahead and nail down what type of pump we're going to use and go ahead and get that spec out so it can be put into the engineering documents. And then, there's just a basic information on the geotechnical firm, Choice, and the Utility Board approved the contract and recommended going with BLE on that. And the only other thing I've got on my list is that, as everybody knows, it's time to sign up for the upcoming election for two spots as commissioner. Right now, you currently have David DeOrio is, one has signed up, Carol Pritchett has signed up, and Commissioner Steve Weber is going to run for another term, so he's signed up. So, right now, those are the three running. There are no mayor candidates right now, so any of you that are looking to be mayor for Talik, we appreciate your dedication and contribution. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. John?
First report on the Lake Advisory Board. We met a week ago yesterday for our monthly meeting. We also, well, one of the things that we discussed, and I'll just bring this up briefly, we have Mr. Wade Offler here with us tonight with the Lake Lur Racing and Rowing Club and they're looking at doing a regatta, rowing regatta in November, hoping to change that a little later date after discussion with LAB and sometime in November where the lake's not so busy. And they're looking at doing a rowing regatta, which is 26 F miles in rowing boats. Well, that's an undertaking for somebody. That would be eight-man teams, four-person teams, eight-person teams, and even have had some individuals interested in doing that. So, that's, that would be, they talked briefly about the course, would start from the beach and go all the way up to the resort and back down to the bridge and make a turn and come back in. That'd be three times to make the regatta. So, that's something that'd be great for offseason, for November. It would all be inside the buoys, inside the buoy line, and so would start probably early 7:00 in the morning, maybe something like that, and be finished by noon. So, they're working hard on that. So, that's, we appreciate that and that's a great event that they're working on for November. Another topic we discussed in the Lake Advisory and was lowering of the lake. I think we determined that this would be our normal three-year rotation coming up for lowering of the lake. We're studying that and looking into that some more. I wanted to mention that because we are going to call for our, today's meeting, we had a special call, Marine Commission meeting today to discuss this. We had contractors that were here and we determined in our meeting today that we will have another special call meeting on August the 9th, which is next month before our regular council meeting starting at 4:00. We're looking for public input in that meeting for anybody that has an opinion about lowering of the lake, if they have a project they're wanting to do about lowering of the lake. We're trying to get input from the public so we make the best decision we can make for everybody involved in the town. So, Dean's working on this, so we encourage you to pass the word about that meeting in August for that. And 13th? I'm sorry. August 13th. I must've hit the wrong button on my calendar, on the phone. So, August 13th. So, pass that word and I will say from Lake Advisory Board, Chief Humphries, it was a busy weekend to say the least. We had the usual crazies and, but I think everything went as well as we could expect it. There were some incident stuff, but it was all, I think, handled real well from the police That's it from Lake Advisory. ABC Board met last month, at the end of last month. Nothing new. We're still watching and listening for state legislature and what's going to happen with the ABC Boards and the privatization possibilities for that. We don't know. That's in, active in legislature. We don't have any news or anything to report on what, any decisions made there for that. We do have a new manager in training at the ABC store, Woody Price, as you all know, who has been here doing that forever and he's wanting to cut back and work some, part-time, but very little. So, we have, the board has identified a new manager in training, so we have someone that's preparing to, when Woody's ready to take over that position as the manager of the ABC store. One other thing I meant to mention on the LAB, Shannon, I'm not sure if you're going to report or anybody is, but on our, what our number was on the power generation revenue from last year, is anybody going to say anything about that?
We weren't, but Sam's capable. Sam?
Itchy. I got your name from?
Our, our.
Itchy. He said, "I got your name because you're itchy." That's sad. That was bad.
I'm so excited.
Glad to see you feeling better.
What was the question?
Power revenue.
Yeah. We produced over a million dollars this fiscal year. Need to check if that's a record.
Million ninety-two thousand or something like that?
That sounds right, yes.
I think it has got to be a record. So, that's an incredible job. That's a million and ninety-two thousand dollars revenue for our town and we're pretty sure it's a record and kudos, you know, that, we have full around-the-clock shifts now through the week and we have someone on duty on the weekends and they shine their light in my bedroom and I love it because I know they're over there working. And they've done a great, incredible job to produce that kind of, well, the budget we had budgeted was?
Like 600,000.
600,000 and that's what we ended up with. So, kudos to Shannon and to everybody involved, David, everybody. That's an incredible job. I think we're going to give them a round of applause.
That's without the small generator, so.
Yes, that's right.
So, we have upside there.
I made the comment that we need to thank the Lord for the rain and for the staff for doing a good job. They did, so that's what got us where we are.
Yep. Thanks, Sam. Thanks, Sam.
That's it.
Okay. The zoning and planning board met on June 18th at 9:30 here and the two things that were covered were the mobile food vendors that we passed an ordinance on just now and the nonconforming structures, which we just passed the ordinance on, so I won't regurgitate that. Stephen?
The Lake Structure Appeals Board did not meet. The Board of Adjustment did meet with one case and the applicant did not appear, so the case was continued to July, but now they have requested August. So, there will not be a Board of Adjustment nor Lake Structure Appeals Board meeting this month. The next one will be in August with that one variance case. The Parks and Recreation Board, normally they meet the first Thursday of the month, but that was the 4th of July, so I guess they were busy. We didn't have a meeting. They're going to meet this week on Thursday at 1:30 here in this hall, so if you'd like to come in to say anything to the Parks and Recreation Board, you're more than welcome. It is open to the public. I unfortunately will not be there. I got hit with some stuff regarding my house renovation that's happening Thursday. Other than that, I'm done.
Okay. Good. All right. Pat Beatty, you're up.
For real this time.
For real.
Pat Beatty, Memorial Highway. I printed a couple of things out of the, what was on Facebook. I don't know, is it, this is a pretty thing with the, I can't believe there's this many projects going on. This is beyond reason, beyond reason. And when I look at that, and I thought it was 100 million, but it's 105 million if we believe the Rutherford paper, it seems such a huge number for a taxpayer to grasp because there's only, well, some sources have 1,131 of us, other sources 1,300, but the 1,131 of us, I mean, we're befuddled that we're out there in those zones and might have to like, this might fall back on us, the taxpayers. I know you're doing everything you need to do to get grants, blah, blah, blah. But has anybody here thought of ways that we can cut the budget back? Not jobs, but just the budget back to save money? I know Bob had some recommendations that saved some money over at the dam, but some other ones, which leads to the point that you two guys know what I'm bringing up. It really bothers me when I see three police cars the Friday after Halloween in 2018 at Dollar General. It bothers me when I turn off number nine to get on 74 to go to the vet at 3:30 in the afternoon and I see one of our cars and our employees there, because I know employees drive their cars home and that's my complaint, because we are putting a lot of money out for the wear and tear, buying vehicles, I don't know if we lease them, but that to me is someplace we could cut back. Maybe have a more, I don't know if the town's ever had a moratorium of not buying any vehicles. I think we have once. But it seems like a big expense and I looked at this and this was nice to see, good transparency, the whole thing, but it doesn't have details in there. So, I don't know how much money is spent on the vehicles and pretty, and how many employees? Are half the employees taking vehicles home or not? I think that needs to be transparent to us. The other thing that's kind of upsets me is the amount of land that we've bought or the strip mall and other lands. I've never seen a figure where all that, okay, we spent a million dollars on land or whatever that is. That would be nice to see as a taxpayer and how much money we have spent on that land to keep it up, fix it up, repair it or whatever, so that we know some of these things that are going on. Maybe you've sold some and we don't know. The whole dredging thing, 48 outlets or water streams coming into here, is there any way to get help from other counties? I don't know, to help pay, because we are the bucket at the end of the road and it seems like us 1,131 have to pay for that. It seems extraordinary to me. Then I read where the Chimney Rock entrance, that, well, I don't know, is this Chimney entrance, that, well, I don't know, is this Chimney Rock going to be an entrance over here or an exit? Because years ago, it was an entrance.
Egress.
Egress. Okay, so that means what?
Exit.
Exit.
An exit. Has Barbara died? How are you going to get an exit with Barbara still living? It's not going to happen, is it?
This is state work that comes in. They're working tandem with the town, but the state controls that. They already have the road up there in the property.
Okay, so if the state controls it, why isn't the state paying for it?
They are paying for the upper half of it.
Over half. Who's paying for the other half?
We'll see where they come. They'll pay for maybe more than half. I don't know. You know, we haven't really had many discussions with them yet. The state kind of lets us know last. And it's not, we don't ask the questions.
Right.
I want you to know that we don't give them any answers. We do try, but I don't think we have any answers on what they're doing or where they're going, because we do need to plan, but we are not giving that information right now.
Well, it would be great sometime to see a project, and maybe it'll be the boardwalk and the TDA money, where you could say taxpayers didn't pay a dime for this. And I look at our biggest asset, which is the lake and the mountains, and that is infrastructure to tourism, and I just feel like, you'll never get it, but the TDA owes more money for helping us with that.
Well, we've got to be thankful, because the TDA, I'll give you a couple of examples, if I may. First of all, they are donating to the boardwalk a hundred thousand dollars, plus another, we're thinking another fifty next year. However, they also run your visitor center now, and they pay all the expenses on that visitor center.
They are paying all their own expenses. Okay, good.
We don't pay any of their expenses over there. I know of zero. So, that's, from where you and I were on the chamber a long time ago.
That's big.
It's miracles. You've got Don Kason who's driving that, and to your point on our project, on your hundred million, a hundred and five million dollars worth of projects, with our Utilities Board, we've been working with all of these projects, and the Utilities Board recognized that we can't pay for all this stuff. So, there's a special team's been established. Don Kason's heading up with the TDA, with the chamber, and we're going to create a team and try to do a presentation put together that we can then take to our state leaders and say, okay, Lake Lur is only eleven-hundred-and-eighty people, or whatever that number is, we can afford to put all this money into Chimney Rock Park and Chimney Rock and infrastructure, because the park's going to need new infrastructure. So, we need your help. What we're doing is we're saying this is our max number that we can pay, and the Utilities Board, I love where you come to, because these people work extremely hard on costs. Just for these pumps, for the sewer system, they have called community after community and say, how about your twelve-hundred pumps? What's working, what's not? And they've broken into sections, and it's been fantastic on that. But this new, this group headed by Don will be going to the state at some time with chamber involvement to do a presentation and say, look, this is all we can afford. We know we can't pay for this hundred and five million dollars. Our limit may be ten or fifteen million. So, we've got to have this help. You're bringing in, expanding Chimney Rock Park, you want sewer, you want water, you want this infrastructure through town center. We've got to have some help. We can't, as a small community, do that. Plus, it's enhanced for them because we are the gateway into western North Carolina. So, it is being worked on. I know you don't see it where you'd like to be. Address vehicles. Vehicles, we got up here and ran the police department and these other divisions down to a point, when I first came on this council eight years ago, that they were breaking down in the middle of the road. They were putting a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty thousand miles in these cars. So, what we did is we established a rotation that when they reach about a hundred and twenty thousand miles, we rotate them out, because if, all of us know when you own a car, there's a certain mileage that you might as well just get rid of it.
But Bob, that's not town miles. That's going home miles too.
It's a combination of both, but also realize all our police and all those people do not get the best pay in the world. This is a small benefit, and I know what a vehicle costs. You know, it's worth anywhere from about seven thousand on average per vehicle a year is what it costs to operate. Plus, when you see this vehicle gets a hundred and twenty thousand miles, they sit in idle on the side of the road, probably equal to another thirty, forty thousand miles. So, understand, your officers don't make the big bucks. They need, they need some help. Plus, you cannot recruit people in Lake Lur for all your police officers.
I know, I've heard that, and I just think with today's economy and the availability of people that are working two and three jobs that shouldn't be, we could get qualified people here that wouldn't need to take a town car.
Your police officers are working two jobs, a lot of them. They're your...
I'll do your work.
Yeah, plus, all this, Pat, I'd like to invite you to come to the next budget meetings when we're having those. They're all public, and we go through all of these things in great detail. Plus, if you want to see all of the breakdowns that you've asked for, they're all in our budget workbook, which you can have a copy of. You can, yeah, and all of those, just, I think just about all the questions you asked, except some of the overall strategic questions, the specific questions you asked will all be answered in there, and you can let her borrow a copy of that, can't you, Sam? It'll all be in there.
Could I add, you mentioned, have we looked at reducing the budget?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
This year, we started with a budget shortfall of over four hundred thousand dollars, and that was primarily due to the county lowering the assessed values on a lot, over four percent of the properties throughout the county. But what we get out of that, that hurt us by over four hundred thousand dollars. Our initial budget that came to us had a proposed tax increase of one point seven cents, and then that ultimately went up to two, over two cents of proposed tax increase. We were all adamant that we were not going to vote on a tax increase this year, and we reduced that budget, that four-hundred-and-something thousand dollars, and cut out a lot of stuff to make sure we did not have a tax increase this year.
We actually had a decrease.
And one more point, while we're on this, I want to go ahead and dredging for you. I agree. We'd love for other counties or other areas to help pay for our dredging. We're very fortunate, this year and next year, Dean?
For the dredge?
For the dredge grants?
Last year and this year.
Okay, and what were those amounts?
It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, total of three hundred thousand in grants.
So, our staff has worked hard to get those grants. The other thing we need to thank Commissioner Weber for pushing is we're trying to get the lake to pay for itself. People got there, you have now concession agreements, not just with Lake Lur Tours and the beach, but also the firm involved. When you see a paddleboard out there, the town's receiving a fee off the top of that to help us pay for this dredging and this kind of work. And the lake's expenses, that's probably six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars a year, just quickly off the top of my head, and I believe we have, what, this year, Steve, a thirty or forty thousand dollar shortfall is all we have?
Well, yeah, we're about, the lake was about, I think, in the budget message. Sam, you wrote that, ninety-five percent self-sufficient, where the revenues pay for the expenses.
This whole, your whole communities, we're with you.
Just get that out there.
We are.
I don't read it.
Public meetings.
We are. We're always publicized.
I can't come during the day.
Is the budget on our website?
Our budget message, our budget message.
I have looked at the budget on the website, and it's difficult. You have to, fifth grader, you have to have things for a fifth grader, for me to understand.
Same way, I'm a high school graduate. I never saw a day at college, so I'm right there with you. But I want you to know that this group is sincerely trying to do that for you, and we don't like it. It's like the sewer costs. These guys on the Utility Board are beating them up every day. We can beat them, and we're still not happy with what we're seeing there, so they're not through. It's going to be...
When the number came out, Bob, it was like, oh, my God.
You're the second person I've had that's made their decisions based on what was written in the paper incorrectly.
Well, the hundred million was in a town report, the hundred million. I don't get the paper. But it's just, and then I'm thinking on the other side, what are we doing?
And here's another problem. We don't have control over a lot of this stuff. The state controls a lot of this. It's not an option that the state would like for us to do it. It's mandated that we have to do it. That's why we're trying to make them have some skin in the game.
Right.
They're making us do it. They ought to have to help pay for it.
Well, I want to give you more, one more example, engineering, okay? The dam, the first contract we had for dam for evaluation, there's no work being physically done, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. They came back with a second phase two, four hundred and ten thousand dollars. We were able to beat that down to three, what?
Two ninety-five.
Two ninety-five from four-ten. That's what we were on the phone fighting over. So, we're putting it out there.
I know that you're working hard, but we're, it's not being transparent.
It's there. It is transparent. I think, in addition to that, it's very much transparent.
We do everything we can to be transparent. We put every nut, bolt, and screw out there. If there's something missing, call, call for it.
We need to improve the communications.
Right, and you started doing that.
Got it.
Started doing that.
And we want it. We want it. If there's something you want to see, let us know. We're for you, not against you.
Yep. Laura, we can get that budget message on Facebook page or whatever, and all that kind of stuff, so. Oh, Laura with the chamber? There we go.
I'm full of energy today.
Are you?
I took the week off last week, so, thanks, guys. I wanted to just take a moment and tell you all, make this short and sweet. John gives me a hard time, I talk too long. But anyway, I was off last week, and so returning this week, I'm getting updated, and I heard about, and I was told about the downtown RFP that was put out for the Wi-Fi. That came to me through the Technical Consortium, which was formed before my time, but I have been serving on it. It's been part of the presentations that I've done to the council on economic development support that we're trying to do with the town. And so, with that said, and in light of the last couple of conversations I've had with you guys, I just wanted to come before you and say, it's part of the chamber's responsibility to support and help with that effort. It's too late for me to get involved at this point because the RFP went out, but I think it's due next week. So, I just wanted to put it out there that the chamber's here to help with that. Let me know how I can do that, Shannon. It's kind of one of those things on the list of things we agreed to do. So, I wasn't here to say that last week in the meeting, wanted to make sure I had a voice.
Thank you. We appreciate you, Chamber, and your work.
Okay, consent agenda. Is there, I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Motion made by Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, I should add. I talked to Michelle prior to the meeting. I had some minor changes to the three sets of minutes under item A, and she's, they're all primarily administrative, and one of them in particular was the June twenty-sixth Special Town Council minutes. One of the corrections in there was on the, during that meeting, was on the budget message, and so I've asked her to attach that to the minutes as part of that meeting, because it wasn't, so.
Okay, so a motion made by Steven, second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. No unfinished business, no more new business. Bob?
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
Made by Bob, second by Steven. All in favor?
Aye.